Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on September 29th, 2017. The meeting will convene at 6:30 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president, so please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion. Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, October 16th, 2017, at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Coming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Vice President Snow will lead us in the OPS Vision and Mission Statement.
I'll begin with the vision. Every student, every day, prepared for success in the mission. Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college career and life.
Roll call please, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
Here.
Gadding.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
America.
Present.
Pearlman.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Scanlon.
Present.
Snow.
Williams.
Present.
Nine present.
All right, we will now move to our Item F, which is our OPS Proud Spotlight. And Ms. Monique Farmer.
Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board, Superintendent Evans. Tonight, our OPS Proud Spotlight is on Standing Bear Elementary School. In August, we recognized Florence Elementary School and Central High School for being ranked in the top three for Omaha's Choice in Education category. This evening, we'd like to recognize Standing Bear Elementary as well for being named the number one school in education in the Second Annual Omaha Choice Awards. In order to receive this award, schools must be nominated by a community and then also selected by a community. I am proud to say that all three of my OPS students have been educated at Standing Bear Elementary. Tonight, we salute Standing Bear for their dedication to students, and I'd now like to welcome Principal Lynette Keys to talk more about the great work happening at the school and the award.
Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board, Superintendent Evans. It is an honor and privilege to stand before you tonight as the very proud principal of Standing Bear Elementary, Omaha's number one choice award winner for K-8 public schools. This award is without a doubt the result of a collaborative effort between a very dedicated, caring, and hardworking staff, outstanding students, and supportive families and community members. Although I would enjoy sharing all the wonderful things happening at Standing Bear and all the reasons why I think Standing Bear was voted number one, I would like you to hear from two of our finest Standing Bear students why they think Standing Bear was voted number one. At this time, I would like to introduce Macy Sakora, Standing Bear second grade student.
Nice and loud.
Why? Standing Bear is awesome. I think it was voted number one because the teachers and the staff are like family to us, and the security guard makes sure we are always safe. The teachers help us when we are stuck and always makes sure we are learning and doing our best. I would never want to go to another school because Standing Bear is the best in the world.
Next, I would like to introduce Audrey Basset, Standing Bear fourth grade student.
Hi, my name is Audrey Basset. I'm a fourth grader at Standing Bear Elementary. I've gone to Standing Bear since kindergarten. I'm here tonight to tell you what I think Standing Bear is the best elementary school. First of all, we have amazing teachers. All of our teachers are positive and care about every student. They work hard every day so we can learn new things. They make me feel safe at school and make me want to come every day. Great teachers lead to great students. They help us be kind and to respect others. Every day, students go home learning something new. Standing Bear not only has great teachers, but we also have great staff members. From the secretaries to the janitors, they build a better learning environment for all of us. They do this by being very positive, especially Mr. McIntosh. He's always so friendly, knows our names, and makes us all feel good about ourselves. Lastly, we have great leaders like Mrs. Keys and Mr. Jones. We try to be our best all the time because we don't want to disappoint them. They work very hard to show us how important learning is. These are just a few reasons why Standing Bear was voted the best elementary school in Omaha. It truly is an amazing school, one that I will miss next year.
Any questions?
Any questions or comments, Mrs. Gadding?
Well, of course, I want to say congratulations to Standing Bear. I've always felt as though Standing Bear was kind of a little hidden gem. You're not hidden anymore. Now, everyone knows what a great school, and so I'm just so delighted. I always enjoy my time when I go over to Standing Bear. The staff, the families, the students are so great. So, thank you for being here this evening, and congratulations.
Dr. Holman.
First of all, congratulations to you all. What an amazing honor. Secondly, it's just truly tremendous to see you all here representing your school in your yellow and blue. You all look so beautiful out there, and I don't know if I've ever seen, since being a board member, this whole section full of support from the staff and teachers and administration from the school. So, very nice to have you all here, and congratulations again.
Mr. Scanlon.
I guess, just can we have everybody that is associated with the Standing Bear Elementary to stand up so we can see everybody that showed up tonight? Wow, that's a pretty big section.
And stay standing for a quick picture. All right, awesome. And I think if we can have our two students that spoke come around, we would like to thank you for coming tonight and give you an OPS Proud Pin. And the Assistant Principal.
Get Lacy if going to Board Digest.
All right, we will move on to Board and Superintendent Communications, and first up is Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Madam President. Several items to share tonight. First, I want to hand out the scheduled events for the Purpose Built Communities National Conference, which is being held right here in Omaha. And the significance for us is that, of course, Howard Kennedy is a purpose-built community model. It's the 75 North Highlands Project, we call it here. But I wanted the Board to know that we started activities today at noon, and they've got activities, as you can see by the draft, going on all day tomorrow. And certainly, if you are interested in any of those activities, it's all going on at the Hilton. It would certainly be an honor to have board members attend any of those activities. I don't think it'd be any problem to add you to those activities. And again, I want to thank the Board again for voting to participate with the Purpose Built Group and 75 North. I think that was a really powerful statement, and we know that Howard Kennedy is already prospering as a result of that decision. Next, I want to continue our recognitions of elementary schools by sharing a late-breaking announcement. At about 3 o'clock, approximately 3 o'clock on Friday afternoon, I was notified by the Office of the U.S. Secretary of Education that we have a national Blue Ribbon School in Omaha, Nebraska, which is huge, huge. And I would like to, I didn't have time to get everything together to get all the students and staff, that's going to come later, but I did ask the Principal Kay Kennedy to join us tonight, and if we could give her a round of applause, and I know we'll see we'll see her and her whole staff. I believe it's next month they're coming in for a spotlight, and by then, you may have even been to Washington DC, because as I recall, you're going to be flown to Washington DC with one of your teachers and be recognized with, I believe there's four schools in the state of Nebraska, 341 across the entire nation, so it's quite an honor, and the second time that Dundee has had that honor. So, congratulations, Ms. Kennedy, and Mr. Pearlman, who has children there and also is an alumni of Dundee. So, the significance of the Blue Ribbon, I don't know if it always occurred during time periods when you were at Dundee or your kids were there or...
It's always a great school. Never.
Always a great school. Well, we will look forward to the entire school with staff and students to celebrate, but I just couldn't help since we did have a quick article in the newspaper, and I know there's more to come. So, thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Next item, just wanted to share with the school board that we have on October 10th, the DCAC, the Citizens Advisory Committee, at 6:30 at Northwest High. As you recall from the communications audit, we made some changes in how that committee works based on the communications audit, and so you'll see some of those changes, and one of them is they're going to be at Northwest High. So, they'll be moving locations, and that came from the committee. There's been some small group meetings, and thank you, Ms. Utterback, for helping spearhead that. But we'd like to invite the Board, if you're available, on October 10th. We'd love to see you at our first kind of revamped District Advisory Committee. Next, I'd like to mention the Jocelyn renovation. The dedication was Sunday, and I wanted to thank Mr. Scanlon specifically. The principal called him out for his support of, with any renovation and construction, you sometimes run into some glitches, and Mr. Scanlon helped us work through some of those decisions with some of our construction leadership, and everything went very smooth after that, and so I appreciate Mr. Scanlon's support, and so did the principal. We had a full house on Sunday with parents, actually, the whole gym was full. So, quite an event, quite an event. So, wanted to thank Mr. Scanlon and also just congratulate all the Jocelyn staff. Next, I wanted to hand out our latest numbers. These are the enrollment membership numbers from September 29th. So, I thought it might be good for the Board to see. Again, we're continuing to see what looks to be, if you look at the total pre-K enrollment, we're going to be somewhere around 800 to 900 students up. If you look just at K through 12, it's probably going to be more like a 500 number increase. But as we've said before, it's a good problem to have. We continue to see enrollment increase, and so I think that's something that we'll see more and more in the future, which I know is part of the conversation we've been having in relationship to a Phase Two bond, is that that number does continue to grow. Next, I've only got one of them, but I can get more if you'd like, or we can have it online. This is a DVD, which is from The Seeds of Hope, which is on refugee students in OPS, as well as Lincoln and Crete schools. They had a private showing, and I know I want to thank Mr. Pearlman also attended that movie, which was pretty incredible. But this is a DVD. You're welcome to have that. If there's others that would like them, please let me know. I think it's also available online. But a great show that we'll be actually having in our next principal's meeting too and talking about what role we play in the lives of our immigrant and refugee students, which is a pretty critical role. So, I wanted to hand that out. And then finally, I wanted to remind the Board that we have one last dedication activity, and that is this Thursday, Sunny Slope, which is a big renovation too, because it was one of the open floor plan schools that didn't have walls in the classrooms. So, that is 2 o'clock on Thursday. Then we'll be done until winter break, and hopefully, if everything works and the weather holds out, Bell Ryan and Western Hills will be able to move. So, those are the kind of the next two. So, this will be the last of our first-of-the-year dedication. So, just wanted to remind the Board of that, and great opportunities to see some excited students, staff, and families. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. We'll move on to Board Member Reports. Are there any Board Members that have? Ms. Ryan.
Well, it's been a while since we had like a board comment, and I just wanted to let people know that I have been visiting some of my schools. And last week, I went to Norris Middle School to see the construction that's been going on and the excitement that the principal has and the students and the teachers have for their expanded resources. So, that was really great. And then I also wanted to make my fellow Board Members aware of something that I was able to attend today, and it is called Mazone. It is a Hebrew word that means food or sustenance, and it's about hunger in our communities. And so, one in eight Americans has food instability, and this is, this organization works with policymakers, so like us, on food insecurity for our students and what does that mean on a policy level? And part of their activities is this little dinner plate, and you're supposed to make a meal for one person, and then multiply it by four to see how much that would cost. And then you'll flip it on the back, and it has a story of somebody who does have food insecurity. So, this is something that happens in our district, and I think it is really important that we realize that, especially when we start talking about things like CEP and free and reduced lunch, because this happens to students who aren't just on free and reduced lunches. This is students that have to pay full price as well, and so it's something that definitely, I think, is applicable to us. So, I wanted to pass this around, and I challenge fellow Board Members to try to fit within the budget that is revealed on the back. First, doing it based on nutrition and what you would feed your own kids or what you would feed yourself, and then based on trying to fit it within this budget and see what the disparity is. There's also some extra for the audience members, the community members, and this is an exhibition that is going to be on at Temple Israel until Wednesday, and so that's one of the synagogues in town. That's all.
Mr. Snow.
Thank you, Madam President. As a child, I was on SNAP, and I think they called it something else before SNAP, food stamps. And had some interesting time with that. I have a lot of things. Well, just I'll run through it. I had an opportunity to attend the African-American Leadership Conference hosted by the Empower Network with, Ms. Williams was there, Dr. Holman and Mr. Evans. And I'll be passing around this, but it was a very powerful conference, and one of the things before that, they had an African-American Success Summit at North, not North High, but University of Nebraska at Omaha, and they had shy over 300 students, men of color, show up for this conference. And one of the things that was really good is, there's a student, well, not a student, but one of their main speakers was, Jaden Bloodsoe, was a 19-year-old millionaire, who, self-made millionaire, who, one day, he said he wanted Snickers. His mom couldn't buy him Snickers, so he started developing websites and creating online things for people in the community. And the good thing about the Internet is people don't have to see you. So, it was a 15-year-old student creating these websites for adults, and they were paying him 10 bucks, 20 bucks, and then eventually, he was being paid $150 an hour. So, really having our students, especially our young men, get to see someone that was 19, that was a self-made millionaire with over 300 employees of his own, very powerful for our students. I also had the opportunity of attending Druid Hill every morning, does like, I would call like a music line when their students come to school, and I was invited by Ms. Williams to attend their music opening, and I'm not really up to date on Moana's music soundtrack, but I was towards the end of it. Is that, is it called Moana, the Disney? And the students line up outside of Druid Hill, and then the principal, they play music and the kids dance while they go get their grab and go and go to their classrooms. So, I had an opportunity to dance and do some high fives, and my dance skills are pretty good, so just letting you know. I'm kidding. I also had an opportunity to attend North High's Engineering Wing and Robotics Program. It's really amazing to see what our students are doing in high school on an amazing level, working with Metro Community College. They had about 16 students down there, and they have about three to four projects a year, and they are working with robotics, actually, full machines that they actually believe were donated by Logier and some other granters in the community that, it was really interesting to be a part of that for half a day. I also had an opportunity this past week to attend the 50th Annual Cube Conference, Council of Urban School Boards of Education. And one of the things I wanted to pass around, which I think was one of the best things, is we did a satellite, a school tour, to St. Charles Parish, and they, St. Charles Parish is a city of about 50,000 people, but they built a satellite career center where most of the students that are in this, they have to apply to get into their kind of career center there. But majority of the students, once they graduate, will already have enough credits to meet the requirements to get almost their associate's degree. It was very, it was, they had a culinary arts program and a lot of things that we have in our community at Metro Community College. So, it was just really interesting to see what a small school district can do in that environment. So, I'll pass this around, and they have like pictures and diagrams of everything of how all the students participate in those programs. So, I know that's everything.
Ms. Williams.
So, I just don't really have anything to report, but wanted to talk to the Board and Mr. Evans. I don't know about you guys, but I've really been receiving a lot of emails and reaching out of parents around bullying, and I think that this time of year, we really should be talking about bullying and talking about, and so I'm really directing from my purview, Mr. Evans, to really begin having that conversation again with staff. Lots of families, lots of our young people, I'm seeing lots of young people actually deciding to leave the district behind bullying issues. And so, it's great that all of these happy events are happening, but, you know, for me, it's about what's going on with students and what's happening with kids, and that is just something that, one, didn't want to bring the mood down, but it's something that's happening across the district, and it's not something that we can forget to address on a continual basis. I know I've shared with Mr. Ray several communications, and I actually have a few more for you, Mr. Ray, to share. But it really makes me very sad to see in the time that we're living in and all of these other social injustices, and we're having issues in our own district, whether it's staff, whether it's families, whether it's students. And I just want to remind everybody that, you know, we are a no-tolerance district. Bullying is taking young people's lives. It's changing families. There's just so many issues that if we can't take that, that initial instance of bullying to heart and address it, you know, at some point, we could be affecting a young person's life or even a family's life. So, I promised some of the folks that reached out to me that I would address this to the Board and ask the administration to work with the staff of remembering that this is a, you know, we have no tolerance on bullying, and we cannot forget that. And I don't want to hear another student not being able to resolve a bullying issue and leaving our district to go to another district when this is the best district in the metro area, and we're trying to prove to our families and our students that we are number one. Incidents like this don't necessarily help us. So I'm just a quick reminder to everyone. Thank you.
And as a reminder to everyone, if you do have parents emailing you with concerns about bullying, please forward those to Mr. Ray so that they can be addressed with the individual schools and the situations that are happening. And I'm sure Mr. Evans would be fine with sending an email out to the board with what's being discussed with principals.
Absolutely.
And that aspect as well.
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, it is part of our, our discussion that, that we, obviously, over, over time, we've always looked at MTSSB, which is School-Wide Disciplinary Policies, which are changing. Some of those practices help delay bullying or, or get rid of bullying, but we're also looking at, I think I shared with the board that we're doing a book study on Equity for Excellence, which is also about showing dignity and respect for all students. So, but we're happy to share what, what we're going to be looking at.
Any other board member reports?
If not, I have a couple of things. I was also at the Seeds of Hope premiere. Mr. Evans somehow forgot. It's all right. Obviously, between our last meetings and now, we've had, we had a lot of things happen, including Open House Week. A couple of unique ones that I happened to go to that I wanted to share with you all to encourage you to also try to take the opportunity to visit were the Virtual School and the Secondary Success Program. The Virtual School, this is the first year that they've had a actual home where they can put things up on their wall and have a dedicated space for their different classes. And so it was really neat to go through and see the different activities the students are do, and doing, and find out how they're working between what, what parents are leading at home versus what is being done in the classroom. So it was just really interesting to go in and visit with them and see. And the Secondary Success Program is our expanded alternative middle school program. So it was really nice to visit with them and find out about the changes they've had because they grew a lot this year, and they asked me to extend to all of you the invitation to come visit during the school day to see the work that they're doing with their students. Last week, a group of us had the opportunity to go tour the 75 North Project and see some of the housing that's been completed and the accelerator building that I think is going to be an amazing resource. So for board members that haven't been able to, I definitely encourage you to go. It's amazing to see what, I remember when Othello came and presented to our board, and it was just a concept on paper, and to see how that's developed now into physical buildings where there's going to be businesses moving in within the next couple of months is really, really impressive. This weekend, Mr. Evans and I attended the Collective for Youth Lights On After School Event. Collective for Youth is a group that works with all of the, and Mr. Ray, I'm sorry, he was also there. They work with all of the after-school program providers, and every year, they have a celebration where kids from the different schools come, and they have different booths set up for them to go and basically try different activities. And they, at that event, also recognize some after-school champions, and this year, one of the after-school champions was OPS Nutrition Services, because they work with a federal program that allows them to provide hot meals to students who are participating in after-school programs. And I thought this was pretty impressive. Over the past 10 years, they have served over 2.8 million hot meals to students participating in after-school programs. So it was nice to see them get some well-deserved recognition that they usually don't otherwise always see. And so I will pass around the annual report that they gave us at that event.
All right. The next item on our agenda is public. Mr. Ray, do you have any additional forms? Okay. We have three speakers who have submitted a request to speak form. The board has adopted Policy 8346, which limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit, and Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, please don't mention them by name. Instead, provide that information to Mr. Ray, and he'll assist us in looking into those situations. And if you do have any written commentary, please provide that to Mr. Ray to distribute out to us. As a reminder, please spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. It is now exactly 7:00 PM, and our first speaker is Tim Carter.
Thank you for the time. My name's Tim Carter. I am Vice President of the Dundee Elementary PTO, and I just wanted to take a minute to express our gratitude for tonight's resolution. We feel, first of all, with Wednesday being National Walk to School Day, it's very timely to have the, the resolution passed this evening. I also wanted to just let you know that, I mean, we think that we have a great walkable neighborhood school with many families that walk to school each day. According to the OPS data, we have 48 elementary school students that live south of Farnham who would use the crosswalks at 51st and Farnham each day. We have 35 elementary students living west of 52nd who would use the crosswalks at 52nd and Chicago to access Dundee as well. Without these crosswalks, there isn't really a safe alternative, and so we feel like a lot of these kids would have to find all, you know, alternate ways to, to reach the school, oftentimes getting bussed there by their parents. You know, we wanted to also thank Superintendent Evans for his support back in August. We felt it was instrumental in helping the mayor reconsider keeping the crosswalks for, you know, further study, which we are hoping will land on our side. We hope that this resolution is a big factor in her decision in hoping to keep the crosswalks as they are. And I also just wanted to thank our representative, Mr. Pearlman, for his support on this resolution. And, you know, I yield my time. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Our second speaker tonight is Susan McCardle.
Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Vice President, Superintendent Evans, and members of the board. Thank you for taking the time to hear my concerns this evening. My name is Susan McCardle, that's M-C-A-R-D-L-E, and I live at 4814 North 139th Avenue. I have a couple of issues to address this evening. First, I'd like to tell you that I support a three-minute time limit for public comment. In school, speeches are often required to be at least two minutes long, and that felt like forever. If you spend the time to organize your thoughts, three minutes should be plenty of time to share your concerns. Since we still have five minutes, though, I plan to use it. I love OPS. In fact, an OPS teacher, Mrs. Wiseman, is the reason my son is able to speak comfortably, not only in a small group setting, but to larger groups as well. My son has always been on the shyer side, and Mrs. Wiseman's nurturing ways allowed him to come out of his shell and flourish. This was extremely important since his elementary and middle schools have placed an emphasis on large groups' presentations. We had great experiences at the elementary and middle school levels, but my family decided that it would be best for our oldest son to attend a high school outside of OPS because of overcrowding and transportation. The school my son is currently attending provides free transportation from my neighborhood and offers smaller class sizes. While my oldest son is no longer in OPS, we really want our youngest son to attend an OPS high school and would be willing to send him to a new far northwest high school if it is constructed in time for him. Unfortunately, the bond vote has already been delayed a year, ultimately delaying the construction of the five new schools severely needed in both South and far northwest Omaha to address overcrowding. I strongly urge you to tell administration that you would like to initiate the design of the new high schools now, since it will take a whole year to design. Additionally, please authorize administration to surcharge the sites if any surcharging needs were identified by the soil studies conducted earlier this year at the high school sites. It is my understanding that we need to make sure the buildings are built on solid ground, and this may require surcharging. It is so important, not only to my family, but to families in South Omaha, to continue the forward momentum towards construction of five new schools. While we decided it was in my son's best interest to leave OPS year, OPS this year, we didn't sell our house and move to a new school district, unlike several families I've known over the last 10 years. Yes, 10 years that I know of, maybe more, people have left our area because of a lack of a neighborhood high school. Did you know that, that we are over four miles from our home school, Burke, yet we are not eligible for district transportation? So please take immediate action and initiate the design and surcharging needs of the proposed high schools. The students of OPS are counting on you, and so am I. Thank you for the service, thank you for your service to our community, and thank you for your time this evening.
All right. Thank you. Our third speaker tonight is Jennifer Simpson.
Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Vice President, Superintendent, Mr. Evans, and board members. Thank you for listening to my concerns this evening. My name is Jennifer Simpson, S-I-M-P-S-O-N, like the show, and I live at 2232 North 163rd Street. My husband and I decided to move back from Nebraska, or back to Nebraska from Hawaii 10 years ago to raise our family. When we searched for our home, we could have chosen other school districts. Plenty of our friends and family did. We chose OPS. We chose OPS because I loved my own experience at Morton Junior High and Central High School. But more importantly, we wanted our children to be a part of the diversity and sense of community that we felt only OPS could offer. As an OPS grad myself and proud parent supporters, we also felt compelled to say, not only do we feel OPS is best for our family, but that we want the best for all kids in our district. We could make a difference in OPS, even if only in small ways. We are doing that in our children's schools. A stronger OPS is stronger for all of our kids, which is why I'm here tonight, asking that the board to prioritize the efforts necessary for the Phase Two bond election to occur. Moving forward with the bond's next phase is about making the district better as a whole, to serve all of our kids and to make our community stronger. But the bond is also about retaining the kids that we have. We are losing good kids and good families throughout the district due to overcrowding, and I am experiencing that, seeing it regularly in northwest Omaha. Many of my middle child's kindergarten class four years ago have left to move to other districts. These are families that were active in our school PTA. They, like Susan, knew they had difficult choices ahead. They considered their high school options, the overcrowding issues, the uncertainty around a far northwest high school, and transportation issues with their home school. They decided to move sooner rather than later so that their kids could establish friendships now, which are crucial to surviving the teenage years ahead. From people I've talked to, this is not limited to northwest Omaha only. Families in south Omaha are also leaving the district. My husband and I still want what's best for all the kids in our district, but it can't be at our own kids' expense. I didn't attend half of my classes in Portables, like my coworker's daughter does at Lewis and Clark. I didn't have to wait until 1:00 to eat lunch, like some of the students at Burke do. Space was not an issue. We, this community, can't wait any longer to move forward with the bond's next phase. Anything we can do to advance progress now in these new schools, like advancing the design of the new schools or preparing the sites, we need to do now. But I also ask the board to consider what we want for the future of our district. Do we want to compete with the other districts? I do. I think we owe it to our kids to do more than just provide the bare minimum with this next phase. Yes, we need new schools and capital improvements in the existing buildings, but we also need to provide hope, a place to dream, to make memories, and to assure kids that they matter just as much as kids outside our district do. Our kids matter as much as the kids in Miller, Elkhorn, Bennington, Brettina, or Papillion. If we simply provide classroom space and take away anything deemed important, important in earlier discussions for these new schools, swimming pool or clinic, black box, sators, is it really enough? It also does less to improve or serve our community by stripping these items out. I know there will be challenges making the numbers work, but we need to ask for what we want up front. To do anything less is not doing what is best for our kids. We also need to put our best foot forward, or we'll end up right back in the same place. We put too much time in this to not do it right. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak and for your service to our community.
All right. We will move on to our consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Pearlman and a second by Mr. Snow. Are there any abstentions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Nineye.
Motion passes. We will move on to action items and J1A, which is the Phase Two bond issue. So we had our board workshop a couple of weeks ago, and at that workshop, we discussed having essentially a resolution or statement that we would vote on at this board meeting pertaining to placing, essentially committing to placing a bond measure on the ballot for Part of that process going forward from here, if we pass this tonight, would be having the community meetings, having individual board member meetings to sit down and go over details pertaining to the second bond issue. Mr. Evans, you have more to fill in there?
Thank you, thank you, President America. Just, just a comment that we've, we've seen the broad picture, but there's still some details we've not gone over, and I think, I think the board still has some questions. I've, I've heard some conversations that would indicate there's still some questions on specificity on some of the projects. My guess is there's a pretty broad agreement with the general overview, but I think there's still some details that we need to sit down with the board and walk through and get your input on before we come back with an actual final plan that then we take back to our community groups and ask our community groups then to start moving forward with an actual advocacy piece, which is the next phase two, after we define exactly what we're looking for, then asking our community groups to become advocates. And, and actually, we have some, some of our folks who have served as advocates are here tonight to talk about CBAC, but that's kind of next step is getting those fine details agreed upon, and there's always, there's always some pieces that I know will be difficult because we can't do everything we want and stay within the ballpark that we've shared with the community already, but I think that's going to be the challenge is which pieces do we slice a little bit while we're trying to add on something that, that also is good for our students? Because I, I do think everything, and I felt that way about the billion dollars that we started out with, every single thing on it was necessary. But to some of our speakers tonight, I know sometimes they ask about why we didn't do a billion. I think the reason was we didn't think we could get the support, and it wouldn't pass. And so, we were told and believed that a lot of our community leadership wanted to see us do the first phase right, of which we are and have, and now I think we're going to get the support this spring. So I think it's putting those details together, creating the advocacy groups, raising, raising dollars from our public advocacy group that will actually then start to sell and advertise and put the signs out and all those pieces that come with that later.
All right. Are there any board members that have comments or discussion? Ms. Williams.
First, thank you for, excuse me, wasn't able to make it to the workshop. However, I did watch the workshop in, in its entirety. So I just wanted to thank Mr. Scanlon, Mrs. Gadding, and Mr. Pearlman. Every question or comment that I had, as I was trying to shoot an email to Mr. Ray, one of the three of you asked the question. So thank you for your feedback. And again, I'm, for the umpteenth time, I'm very much in support of this bond, but just wanted to acknowledge all of you for those comments and questions because I think you all stated what a lot of the community is stating as well. And it's time for some action around this bond, so I'm happy to see this as an action item on our agenda this evening.
Mrs. Gadding.
So I just want to reflect back on what Mr. Evans said and make sure I understand. So one of the things we talked about was a timeline. So once we get through this action item, I'm assuming then we'll lay out a timeline of the community and, and the board and, and- of the community and, and the board and, and putting together all of the efforts that go into doing the bond and all of that sort of work that is outside of the responsibility of, you know, our official capacities as board members with district resources. So I just want to make sure that that's where we're headed and a bunch of those questions that we had, and I know I've continued to get questions from constituents on a number of detailed items, that that'll be forthcoming after this.
Great, thank you.
So I would actually like to move to, and I, I'm not exactly sure, I don't see the wording, but if I truncate what's here on rationale, I'm assuming Mr. Ray will tell me if I've got it right. So I move to recommend approval for the, for the full formal development of planning, documentation, community engagement, and delineation of scope of work for a Phase Two bond issue.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Gadding and a second by Ms. Williams. Mr. Scanlon?
I think that as a district and as a board, that we're in a very improved position than we were for the first phase. We had the facility study done last fall, which I don't, we had one, but I don't, I don't think it was 100% complete. This one I feel more comfortable with as we move forward and again, you know, asking the, the community and the, the voters for a large sum of money. We always have to make sure that we do our due diligence and we are responsible with, with those tax dollars. And I think that the first phase, as, as we'll hear with the CBOC Phase One program update, I, I do believe that we have been doing a very responsible job with all the different renovations and projects that we've been doing. And I just, I, I feel much more comfortable this go around. Last, last time we knew it needed to be done, but we, you know, it was one of those like, okay, how much? We don't necessarily know. We went through some growing pains, but this time I think we'll, we'll most likely have a much more data-driven dollar amount. And I think that, you know, to continue to improve Omaha Public Schools, I think this is much needed for the second phase to, to move forward.
Mr. Pearlman?
I too am in favor of moving forward with a more discussion about the next phase of the bond, but I would like, as we move forward, to have some more clarity on just where the capacities are, are most acute. During our student assignment plan, subcommittee earlier, well, it was last week, I, we received some of the, the figures on enrollment, and some of them were, were very surprising to me. In South Omaha, the, the needs are, I would say, past critical for capacity issues. But some of the things that were surprising to me are that Benson is at less than 75% capacity, still has room for 500 students. North High School is less than 70% capacity and has room for 900 students. And Northwest is at less than 85% capacity and has room for more than 230 students. So we talk about capacity and, and the necessity for improved capacity. I just want to advocate strongly for South Omaha where we have classes in former homes and the number of, of portables there is, I, I heard in one case, as many as classrooms inside the building. So I know we've, there's been a lot of talk initially about a West Omaha High School, a South Omaha High School, two elementary schools and a middle school, but I'd like to keep the door open for the possibility of, of a third elementary school in South Omaha if that need exists. And so I, I just ask the administration to continue to, to provide the data that will rid this district of portables, not just decrease the number of them. Thanks.
Mrs. Gadding?
I think it'll be really helpful when we go through the capacity piece to really take a look and see what true capacity is. I know that this conversation came up previously because sometimes capacity shows up on there, but for example, at North High, because of the engineering wing and some of the spaces that are there, the capacity looks greater than what you can actually have students in that particular space for. So there are a number of issues that really do impact capacity as well as the fact that we know that schools that operate at around 1,500 students have some of the best achievement out there in the country. And I know Mr. Evans has kind of always said that when he came here, that you see really great student achievement because you have, we, we certainly operate well at far above that, but when given the opportunity to pull those numbers down a little bit and give students the opportunity to really be engaged in a smaller setting, sometimes you can have a greater impact on the entire student body. So I want to make sure that we think about all those things, and I don't know exactly, we've had that capacity conversation many times about what is real capacity and what isn't real capacity, and real capacity is not sitting on a stage having a class when you're hearing impaired either, so, and I've seen that happen before. So I just want to make sure we address that with a full discussion.
I do think those are the conversations that we have in the board workshops that we'll have in the near future is going over those, what is capacity, what isn't capacity, how many portables do we have, which by the way, we have 148 at the elementary level alone, another 64 at the middle school level, and I believe it's 48 at the high school level, just to give you a bit of scope on the number of portables. It's huge. I mean, that's beyond belief for me, but, but really, we didn't address a whole lot of that growth need. It was safety, fire life, and safety needs. We built storm shelters, we built code, key entry, entry, safe entry areas. We remodeled schools that were open, open floor plan schools like Jocelyn last weekend. So we did a whole lot of that work and, and a couple of cases, like Bell Ryan and Western Hills, the, the facility was in such poor shape, it just didn't make sense to do anything but replace the whole facility. But we, we did minimal work to address the capacity issue. And, and I have to keep reminding folks, and I know I've had individuals in the community say, well, you did the bond issue, how come we still have 200 and some portables? Well, that wasn't what we addressed on this, on this Phase One. Really wasn't the high priority. But Phase Two, that really is the high priority.
That's very true. And tho, those are the exact details that we will be getting into through the board workshops and individual meetings. So definitely stay on top of communicating with each other and with Mr. Ray when he sends those out, the request to get those set up and scheduled. And something I did want to bring up, because I happened to read the Lincoln paper, is if you notice, I think it was late last week, there was an article in the Lincoln Journal-Star, and Lincoln Public Schools has, I believe, around 40,000 students, and they just formed a committee to start looking at their seventh high school. And we're a district with 52,000 students and we have seven high schools. So I, that was just something that caught me as, okay, they are smaller than us, but they are going to be up to the same number of high schools at this point because of their growth and their capacity issues. So definitely something for us to keep in mind of things that are happening in other districts too. Any other board comment? Seeing none. Roll call please, Mr. Ray.
Gadding.
Aye.
Hallman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Nineye.
Motion passes. All right. Administration and board officers and district staff will get started on our next steps for moving forward with bringing back a timeline and actions for a Phase Two bond issue. All right, speaking of bond issues, we will move on to our information items, and first up is J2A, which is CBOC and Phase One Bond Program Update.
Members of the board, good evening. Mark Summer with Jacobs. Appreciate the time this evening. Again, I work with my partner here, Mr. Bradford, who's going to give you a little bit of a brief on the last couple of conversations we've had, have, have had at CBOC. So got a short presentation this evening, just to give you an overview or an update of where the overall bond program is. This last summer, there was a handful of six or seven schools that were really a focus to get done for this summer, so we're going to largely focus on those and then a, a few details in between. So we'll go ahead and get started. From an overview perspective, again, still 83 projects. All of those projects, except for one, are really active in the bond program in one way or another. Either they're in the design process, they're physically being built, we're working on closing them out. Kellum is the, is the final project, and that will be starting relatively soon. It's a fire, life, safety scope at that campus. Total progress, one of the things I just want to note, the bond's passed $300 million from a commitment perspective. And just a quick reminder, of course, commitments are really purchase orders and contracts that come through the district for, for approval, and that's really the large measurement that we use to gauge the status of the bond program, knowing if the board has ratified a contract or purchase order's been written, those monies are going to be paid out unless something drastically changed on a project. So we really gauge kind of the status of the program on that, and as you can see, that's at about 72%. That's a significant milestone. And of course expenditures follow that. That's currently at about $230 million. Program contingency, of course, we continually monitor that. At this point in, in time, the original budget was $37.9 million. Right now, we're forecasting use of about $25 million of those dollars. So we have six, seven, eight projects left to bid out, large construction projects. We'll talk about them briefly towards the end of the, the show, so we're not exactly sure what program contingency needs. Those projects might have, but once those are bought out, we can maybe start having some preliminary conversations on really the financial end of Phase One, what it might look like. Ongoing projects on the right-hand side, all of those projects are really in the closeout, not going to read them all, but the list is long and, and we want that list to continue to grow as projects move through the construction and get turned over for final use. Of course, the program's on budget, it's on schedule. We had one safety incident since the last time I presented, I think a couple of months ago, an individual tripped over a ladder and fractured their elbow. This is a con, a construction worker. So still no student or staff issues, and, and we continue to work really hard to keep all of that separate from the normal construction activities. Economic inclusion, of course, if you recall, the, a significant charge by this board, a previous board to really ensure the bond program was providing maximum opportunity. Total commitments for the bond program, excluding really site procurement and a couple other minor expenditures, the $272 million. Of that, 9.3 million have been committed to tier-one businesses and 24 million to tier-two businesses for a total of about $33.5 million, or 12% of the total. If you recall, the target that was set by the, the district was 7%, so we continue to trend above that, and we have no reason to believe that in the future that, that trend would go down inside of this program. So real excited about the next round of projects. Last week, there was a meeting here actually for the 32nd and Burke Project. The, this evening, you approved the construction documents for that project, so tomorrow we'll send out advertisements and start the bidding process for that. Had a small business meeting here last week that was well-attended, and folks are real excited about the next opportunity. So that was a great meeting. These projects are really in the closeout stage. Crest Ridge Elementary had a storm shelter addition of, of three classrooms, really modernized the, the remaining classroom spaces in the rest of the building. One of the, the major changes is really the front office. If you were familiar with it before, you kind of walked in and the, the reception desk was right there on the right-hand side, and principal was kind of tucked back in. Reconfigured a lot of that to make sure that any visitors have to, has to pass through a secure entry. Now they're forced to go through the office space before they can enter the school. Another issue out there really was kind of the bus drop-off and some of the parking around the facility, so we added some bus pull-off lanes and some additional parking. And the feedback we got from the neighborhood when that was put in really instantaneously was a lot of gratitude for just addressing the concerns and the issues that they raised during the edspec process. Franklin Elementary School, this was an open-to-close concept, completely modernized the existing building. One of the most significant features at this campus, if you recall, used to have a two-story function, you could look kind of down into the media center. We infilled that space, so the media center's now on the, on the primary floor, so it's accessible really from the, the main level, if you will. And then below that is really where the safe area was built out. Also modernized the, the restrooms, put in the, the typical or the standard district hand wash stations where kiddos can be supervised during those activities. And then again, transformed any of the open classroom concepts, which were largely doors and frames, put all those in to make sure each classroom could be secured individually. Indian Hill, similar to, to some of the other projects, Crest Ridge, modernized the classrooms, complete HVAC installation, modernized electrical. Again, you can see the modernization of the restrooms. The cafeteria was updated. If you remember, it used to have carpet kind of over the cafeteria tables. Of course, all that's gone now, completely modernized the entire space. This was a campus and elementary school that had a significant auditorium. The auditorium was infilled and converted into the safe area there, so we were able to build that without adding any additional actual square foot to the building. Jocelyn Elementary, again, an open-to-close concept and an addition. If you ha, if you've had a chance to visit that campus, the addition is actually where the safe area is. Also added, did a little bit of structural work to add a multipurpose space that now can function as, as some cafeteria overflow, which really allows them to schedule lunch periods more efficiently with the gym before they had a lot of challenges of really gym utilization without that multipurpose space. So I know that's been a big delight for that campus. Lothrup, again, an open-to-close concept. I think a lot of folks have had an opportunity to see that campus, completely different than what it was before. When I, when I say open concept, literally, you know, you walk down the hall and all the classrooms were wide open. Now they all have their own independent walls and, and teaching areas. I know the staff is really appreciative of that. Modernized restrooms, and also the other piece too, they really wanted to identify their front entry better, put more of a control vest to be on place again for safe entry. So that work was also done. And also, I think, finally, Sunny Slope, a campus again where there, an addition was needed, removed existing portables or in the process of removing existing portables, provided a safe area also in this addition space, modernized the rest of the building along with the new construction. Again, campus extremely happy with the end results and, and same with the community. This here is just a quick listing of the projects that are in design, and the designs will really be finalized over the course of the next two to three months, ultimately resulting in a request for us to have board approval so these projects can go out to bid. So the 32nd and Burke, New Elementary School, Boyd, Clemmie and Dodge, Hartman, Bryan Middle, Nathan Hale Middle, and Bryan High, all in the next three months will go out to bid, and we'll, we'll start work close to the first of the year on many of them. 32nd and Burke, we're trying to figure out exactly what work we might be able to get done before the snow flies. Part of that project was what you've seen happen in getting the existing parking lot and, and utilities removed. That'll really, really allow the contractor to get moving early in the spring if there's no opportunity for any work before the snow flies, as they say. And then these are all the projects that are in kind of various stages of construction. Some of them, of course, are significant or new facilities like the JP Lord Building. Some of them, we're just finishing up some classroom modernization, that's in Northwest High. Norris Middle School, significant modernization, addition, renovation, and, and all those other adjectives are going on there. And then a lot of the other locations are the, the card access, controlled entry type of projects. So still got quite a few projects under construction. This list will grow a little bit more before it gets smaller, and again, as we transition projects into a closeout. So just wanted to kind of provide a brief update on, on really some of the significant things that happened over the past couple of months. I know it's been a little bit, since we've had a chance to provide some information to the board on Phase One. So if there's nothing specifically for me, I was going to ask Mr. Bradford to come up and just provide a little bit of thoughts from the CBOC perspective.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Woody Bradford. I am also a graduate of Dundee Grade School and glad, glad, well, this principal is gone, and I'm, I'm pretty happy about that. Still live in the neighborhood. I, you know, I, I've, I don't have a lot of statistics, but I can tell you one thing. When we got the job at CBOC, we were told that our job was two things. We had to, the project had to be on time and it had to be under budget. That was our job. And there were some great, there were some great folks on this committee. And there were some great, there were some great folks on this committee, and they grilled everybody every time we met. And basically, this, we have brought this project in, and when I say "we," I mean all of us, what I guess I want to say is you guys should be pretty proud of what's going to happen here. When this job is over, we will be, this project, Phase One, will be under budget and on time, eighty-three projects. It will have completed the great economic inclusion that you were all worried about. You're going to love the numbers, you're going to love the results that have come out of that, you're going to be, love the jobs that were created, you're going to love the new entrepreneurial spirit that arose out of it, and it's all because of that project alone. So you can get pretty excited about that. The, the idea that I just want to leave you is, and I thank you for the vote, thanks for the vote, but Mr. Scanlon was right in one respect, that this is the, this report that we're going to make to the general public about this bond issue, Phase One, is going to kickstart a lot of different things. I don't, I, it's, the second, the bond issue, I think we'll be able to sell in tremendous, in a tremendous way. I don't want you to start thinking that you have to just cut back all your dreams here. Think, dream a little bit with this second expansion, and build on, build on this first phase, this Phase One, this bond issue one, to go forward. I'll leave you with one, one thing. Be proud of the process that got all this done. You know, you guys have been through a lot, don't misunderstand me, and I understand that. But right now, be proud of the process, sell the process, and go forward. Be as positive as you can. Be as positive as we are on the CBOC board, and I, I would be telling you something different if I truly didn't believe it. So when you see these numbers come in, tout them up, and good luck. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bradford, and thank you for your time and dedication to serving on the CBOC Committee as well. Are there any board members that have questions or comments? And I think Mr. Evans has something to add as well.
If I could, Madam President, I just want to, again, express the thank you to Mr. Bradford for all the time and energy he's, he's invested in supporting this Citizen Bond Oversight Committee, the first one ever in the history of this district. So I think he's right, the board, the district, has a lot to be proud of, that we told the citizens, I told the citizens when we first talked about this whole process back when we were selling it to community members, chamber groups, that we'd have a citizen group that would review this on a monthly basis, and that's what we've done since 2014. And so I appreciate that we had a great citizens group to work with, and board members that also served on it, I know Mr. Scanlon's been a consistent board member on it as well. But I think it is something to sell Phase Two, that we'll do this again. It won't be done, it's the first time we've ever done it, but now I think it's how we do business. From now on, we'll always have a citizen group that meets on a monthly basis, that holds our project manager and superintendent accountable to make sure we're moving ahead in the right direction. But I think it is something to say that we did what we said we'd do. And that was a big question in 2014. There were a lot of community members that said, "We hear you talking, but it's been fifteen years since your last bond issue, and there's been a little bit of confusion of sort, and we just don't know." And the reality is, now we can say with clarity, feel confident, feel comfortable. So thank you, Mr. Bradford. And I also want to thank you, I was at the meeting today for Seventy-Five North, Purpose Built. His son is one of the board members that's guiding that work, that's a partnership with us with the Highlands Project. So thank you to your whole family for supporting not only Dundee, but everything else as well. So thank you for that.
All right. Mr. Perlman.
Thank you. From one Dundee grad to another, thank you. Thank you for serving on the CBOC, along with everyone else. Have a few questions. One of the reasons I'm optimistic for the second bond is because one thing that's being done a little differently than the first time was the comprehensive study by DLR. Can you, are you familiar with that? Is, is, is there some explanation that could be made about the difference between the first bond and how things were sized up this time?
Really, from a, from a CBOC perspective, their purview right now is Phase One. So we haven't really briefed them or shared any Phase Two, other than the few CBOC members that have been part of the steering committee conversations. And even in that group, we haven't really kind of line-by-line detailed through the DLR process. We've shared the same information that the boards received on, you know, how the previous study was performed, and what this study really was about, and really the differences between the two. But beyond that, that's really not been in CBOC's, in the conversation at CBOC at this point.
Okay. And one of those examples that the board was provided was at, was it Catlin? Catlin Elementary. And in that particular circumstance, the first capital plan from 2004 predicted an allocation of more than one million dollars at that school, but because of the DLR review of what was needed there, that cost has been reduced to about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, so there'll be significant savings there of more than seven-hundred-thousand dollars, because it's focusing on priority levels one through three. And if I, I think I lost it here, I had it pulled up, but level one through three, priority level one is something that's critical. Correcting a cited life safety hazard or other imminent hazard, and then there's priority two, potential critical, which is a one-year, long and short, but something that needs to get done right away. Priority three is categorized as necessary, which is not yet critical, but is something that needs to be taken care of within two to five years. And then there's priorities four and five, which are longer-term things, five to ten years, and priority five, more than ten years out. And the reason I bring this up is because in looking at the binder that we all received that was used to compute the three-hundred-and-ninety-nine million dollar price tag for the Phase Two of the bond, as I understand it, those were priority levels one through three? Is that, that accurate to say?
Yes, that's correct.
So if there's any modifications that need to be done, you know, we've spoken about how we will be getting input from the public over the next few months. I just wanted to be clear in my mind that things that will either have to be shelved to stay under four-hundred million would be level priorities one, two, or three. The only other alternative being the price tag starts to creep over that four-hundred-million-dollar mark. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Mrs. Gadding.
And I just want to make clear for the public, if it was a priority one, and it was something that put a child or a staff person in imminent danger, we've taken care of those priority ones, I think, from my conversations with Dr. Turnquist. So I don't want people to think that, oh, it was, you know, potential imminent danger, and we haven't done anything about that. We absolutely would not leave our staff or our students in difficult situations, so...
That's a good point, and we actually did that tonight with one of our schools.
Right, and we did that with one that may not have been priority one, but may have been a priority-two item on a cooler that is out, period, not getting fixed. So had to purchase a new one. So I just, and I also think there was some work in that priority one through three, as I've mentioned every time, that was, that actually got done in Phase One. So when the numbers are all being vetted out, there's just a whole lot of information there. It's big numbers, and there's a reason why we have to kind of allow folks like J. Gibson team and staff to go through and figure out what, what is left of priority one through three that still needs to be done, and how critical is it for the community standpoint?
All right. Mr. Scanlon.
I guess just having sat on the CBOC for...
Ever.
Yeah, thank you. I don't, don't even want to guess how long, but I really appreciate all the community input and the, the variety of backgrounds that we have on the CBOC. I mean, we have lawyers, we have people that are, you know, former high school principals, we have people that are in the construction industry, architects, and folks that bring a wide variety. Everybody has kind of their niche of what they look at, and it really does help just make sure that we're, we're not overlooking something. And the participation has been great, and I, there really have been, I'm sure Mark will attest, there's been some good meetings, and there's been some uncomfortable meetings, to where you get some people that'll just drill it down to, they want to know exactly where this penny's going, and how's it getting processed, and, and it's just been a very good oversight committee that, you know, obviously, I would suggest that we do it for the Phase Two bond, but it's just a lot of great things that kind of magnifies how large of a undertaking this, this first phase has been, to where you can have people bring up questions and concerns that were never on my radar because of my background, so... But no, I thank everybody that's served on the CBOC, and, you know, hopefully you guys are ready for Round Two to serve again.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, and thank you all. And I think as Mr. Scanlon said, thank you to everyone who has been part of the CBOC, because it was kind of an experiment that started with the first bond issue, because we said, you know, we're, we're going to do this first part, and we're going to show the community that we can do this, and be transparent, and use resources respectfully and efficiently, and I think CBOC has shown that we're doing exactly that. All right, we'll move on to our committees of the board update. It's been a while since we got updates from our committees. We'll start off with budget, and Mrs. Gadding.
So we actually haven't met, we meet October 25th. We haven't met since the last time that Mrs. Kenoke presented to the board, which was right before the statutory time period for approving the budget, and she and her team have been busy working with the auditors, and so we've allowed them to get all that work done, and we'll be meeting at the end of October.
All right. Mr. Perlman for Policy Committee.
Actually, I think Mr. Ray was going to run, run through those.
Yeah, I'll run through those during the policy update on the agenda.
Ms. Williams, Americanism.
So the Americanism Committee met on the 12th of September, and I don't want to reveal too much, because they are going to be our school spotlight on October 16th, which is going to be amazing, but we talked about, it is going to be amazing, I am excited about this. So we discussed, did an overview of the JROTC Military Science Program. Mr. DeBolt was with us and did a really amazing and very thorough history of JROTC, and so I just wanted to kind of give some, just a little bit of data. So we currently have eleven-hundred cadets in OPS. In the OPS, in the Omaha Metro area, there's two thousand, but we have eleven-hundred of those. Forty percent of all the cadets in the Omaha Metro are female. There are, got notes all over the place here. So for the OPS history, Central's first JROTC was, started in 1887, North, 1928, Benson, 1936, South, 1941, Burke, 1963, Bryan, 1964, and Northwest, 1971. And the first JROTC instructor employed by the district was in 1893. So we obviously have a very long history of having this program in the district. Some other, some other fun facts to know is that they have a, it's a, it's called LET, Leadership Education Training, and it's, the curriculum is based on, it's called Curriculum Manager, and so basically making sure that all of the JROTCs across the country are following the same curriculum. Something that Mr. DeBolt pointed out, a lot of people assume that if a student is in JROTC, they go straight to the military, which is, that is not correct. And so the, the data he gave us was, out of the one-hundred-and-fourteen seniors, sixty-eight either did vocational education, and twenty-two indicated that they were enlisted. So a higher number do vocational education, but they're training for other careers in military science. Talked about some of the community service projects that they do. I think the highlight for me with this was the Cadet Leadership Camp that they host in August. There's two-hundred cadets that go to this, and they do, let me list some of the following activities, and we're talking about our high school students, and shows my age when I looked at this list, like, wow, they do all of that. So they do some STEM at the SAC Museum, they do a helicopter ride, they have a tour at UNL, they do land navigation, rappelling, they do a rope bridge, they learn first aid, they have a leadership reaction course, they are learning marksmanship, they run in one mile, they learn archery. So very active for these students, and there's two-hundred of these students becoming leadership in the JROTC Academy in our, in our district. So just really excited for our next board meeting, so that we can actually see the students lead the pledge, they get to talk about their experience, so just stay tuned. But it was a really thorough update. I learned a lot about it, and so anybody else on the committee want to add? It was very, lots of data. If you know Mr. DeBolt, he's got data for you, and he really breaks it down, and so for me, it was just very interesting to learn about the amazing things that we're doing and supporting these eleven-hundred students that are in our JROTC program.
All right. Thank you. And I believe a copy of the PowerPoint for that briefing is attached to the meeting, if you haven't had a chance to look at it yet. We will go back over to Mrs. Gadding for Student Assignment Plan.
All right. That is a great PowerPoint, if you haven't had a chance to look at it. I was pretty impressed when I went through it over the weekend. For Student Assignment Plan, so we had a really big meeting, a long meeting, and Mr. Ray didn't tell us we were going to need to bring sleeping bags, so we didn't get through everything, but I will go through what we were able to get through. We had Travis and Kara Saliderno, Saliderno, Saldierno, I knew I was going to say that wrong, sorry, Kara. So they were both with us to kind of talk about transportation efficiencies in special education. We talked about different situations and which special education is routed, and we looked at some specific data. So just to give folks an idea, our sped riders, we have twenty-one-hundred-and-thirty-eight of them. Our buses are the smaller ones, the OPS buses, so when you see an OPS bus, it's typically a special education bus. We have about five on every one of those buses, which is a pretty good number considering the capacity of the bus and the needs of the students sometimes on the bus. We have had six-hundred-and-fifty-nine requests since the beginning of the school year, which is pretty significant in special education. So I think just as we, we processed through some of the different issues related to special education and the costs, and they're trying to work on some efficiencies, and we hope that staff and principals will be able to help with some of that as we move forward throughout the year, because that would be most helpful from a cost perspective, but we also want to make sure we're addressing the needs of the students as well. The other thing that we did was we reviewed with Casey Hughes from Research, a number of things, as Mr. Perlman alluded to earlier, related to student selection. So when we started the process of the new student assignment plan, we were aware that the actual number was over three thousand, but, but when we got down to the end of December of last year, 2016, we were looking at about twenty, close to twenty-five-hundred students who we knew would lose transportation for this school year. So to give everybody kind of an idea of what happened, ninety-five percent of those students are still enrolled in OPS. Twenty-five percent of those, or five-hundred-and-eighty-two students, actually changed their address, and we had heard from folks who said, "We think we're going to move either closer to the school we want to attend, or to a different school, we'll let you know." And that really was the case for twenty-five percent. Fifty, almost fifty-eight percent of the students are actually in the same school that they were in, even with a loss of transportation. Forty-two percent are in a new school, and for, for those students, sixty percent of those essentially, or almost sixty percent, are in their home-attendance area of school. So I think that's just some good data to look at. As always, research brings us unbelievable information and allows us to have data that really helps us to inform the decisions that we're making, and I'm always so grateful for that. So to give you an idea of kind of enrollment numbers, just quick overview, from the L- So to give you an idea of kind of enrollment numbers, just quick overview, from the elementary schools, the fifteen sixteen to the sixteen seventeen year, we saw almost a one percent increase in home attendance area, um, attendance in, in elementary. The difference between sixteen seventeen and this current school year, seventeen eighteen, we see almost a two-point-three percent increase in home attendance area attendance, uh, bringing the number to seventy percent. So seventy percent of our students are now attending their home attendance area school. When we look at middle schools, that number for fifteen sixteen to sixteen seventeen was an increase of two-point-seven percent, and for the year we're in right now, from last year, it was, it's an increase of three-point-three percent. So almost seventy-four percent of our middle schoolers are attending their home attendance area school. It's a, it's a lot different at the high school level, and when I tell people, I can remember telling people in fifteen sixteen, fifty percent of our students choose a high school other than their home attendance area high school. That number jumped to fifty-two percent in sixteen seventeen, and for this year, it's close to fifty-four percent. So we've seen quite a bit of increase, even though we saw no change in transportation, um, as far as the transportation plan that went into effect for this year, it didn't include high school students. So some of the things that we didn't cover that we will be getting to are, um, the transition of sixth grade to beverage, that's, um, an important conversation, and we know with, um, the challenges sometimes that that sixth grade transition brings, as we saw last year. So we want to make sure they're ready for that. We also have just a number of, um, pieces of information with Bell Ryan and Western Hills, um, the, at some point, the future of, of Kellam and the Thirty-Second and Burt's, and we've talked about that with the boundaries that we've already discussed, so we'll look at those items, but we'll continue to monitor the partner zones to make sure that the choices that we've given to students allow for that, um, bit of integration, but also, um, giving people, um, efficiency and understanding what's happening. So, um, if we think that there's changes that need to happen as we tweak the plan, we'll bring those to you at a future date. So that's where we're at, we still have lots of work to do, even though the, the plan is in effect, but lots of, um, data analysis to do.
All right, thank you. Next up is Vice President Snow and Superintendent Search Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, um, the job is posted on Ray and Associates' website, as well as our OPS soup website, it has been updated for the current superintendent search. Uh, the job is open till January 5th for any individual that is interested in applying for the position. Our previous meetings, the committee has been working on, uh, a timeline and a schedule for the superintendent search, and our next meeting is actually this Thursday, we'll be talking about interviews and the timeline. So, the job closes on January 5th, so, eh, typically, a, a search for an appointed position, public position ranges from three to six weeks with interviews and community involvement, so we are still working through that, and we'll be working on that this Thursday.
All right, next is Legislative Committee. Um, we did have kind of our summer meeting, um, on the eighteenth, and talked about a variety of things, um, some, looking at legislative proposals for the next year a little bit, um, and spent a lot of time really talking about interim, um, discussions and interim hearings, interim hearings that have gone on, um, during the summertime when the legislature's not in session, the committees do have essentially educational hearings on different topics. Um, so they've done some hearings on TIF, Tax Increment Financing, um, looking at how that impacts school districts and communities, and discussing whether districts should be notified and have the opportunity to give input and have a say, um, when property within the school district is placed under TIF, because that does affect school funding, um, not just for Omaha, but for districts across the state. And another, um, big set of hearings that has been happening was on Legislative Resolution 130, uh, regarding substitute teachers, uh, because we statewide have a substitute teacher shortage. Um, part of that's related to retirement provisions, um, that came from Healthcare Acts, and people having to have a, du, separation of employment before they could resume being a substitute teacher with a district that they had previously been employed with, but something I found interesting, um, was a discussion we had about school-related activities and the absences that they cause, um, especially in some of our more rural districts where, like, right now you have district golf going on, so all of your golf coaches in every district that has a golf team, they're gone, they have to have a substitute teacher. When you get into things like state volleyball, state basketball, state football, if you're pulling a head coach, their assistant coaches, family members of the students on the team for a game during the school day, you've exponentially increased the number of substitute teachers above what you would normally need for a normal day. Um, so I'm looking forward to seeing what comes of that discussion and hopefully future discussions between, um, NSAA and school districts and the legislature. And our last committee is CBOC, but we heard from them, and Mr. Scanlon's given us a thumbs up that we're good. So we will move on then to J2C, which is Policy Update, and Mr. Ray.
So attached to the agenda tonight is information that was supplied, uh, supplied due with paper copies on nine eighteen. Again, these are the migration from the old policies to the new policies, so I think we have one more batch that has to go through, but this will be, uh, the larger batch that will match these, uh, policies. So the, the goal is to have this as first reading on the sixteenth, and then final approval on the sixth. So just, uh, the chart that's uploaded into the agenda gives a quick summary of where the matches to the old policies and what we've done to change them, um, as part of the Policy Committee that met on nine eleven twenty seventeen. Just a few notes at the very bottom of that chart, there is a few changes that we were, are looking at changing. Under the four thousand series, Section D was named Personnel, and we're recommending changing that to Employee Benefits. No actual change in any policy, but just in the title of that section. Uh, we're also, instead of going through each policy for job description title changes, the committee is recommending that any reference to the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction Assessment, or Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Support, they've had a few name changes, um, we're going to update it so, uh, it reflects the current job titles. So instead of going through each policy, we'll just ask for approval to change anything that has those references. They're each outlined, uh, and changes are red, so this is just an information item, so as you review them, please let me know if you see any errors or any corrections, or if you have any questions, and again, then I will bring it forward on the sixteenth as first reading.
All right, do we have any questions or comments tonight? Mrs. Gotti?
I just have a couple. Um, as I read back through them, again, I had one on four oh, forty thirty-five, on page two of two. Item E, to the very bottom, talks about, um, the Board of Education annually getting a report from the CFO on the liability of contracts that go beyond one year. I just don't remember that, we get a lot of paper, so if we've seen it before, I'm sorry, and maybe we don't have any, but I'm just wondering if we could just get a report that says there are none, just to fulfill that particular policy. Um, I'm kind of guessing that there probably aren't any. Under Policy four oh three nine, I just want to make sure, from a community standpoint, that we're clear, and I think it's there, but I just want to verify that publicly. When we talk about temporary service of, uh, a non-regular employee for the purpose of providing service for a limited period of time, not to exceed one year, I'm assuming that individual is not a member of OSERS? Is that accurate? Or do, do they get to participate in the retirement system if they're in for one year as a temporary?
So you're looking at B? Is that where you're at?
Uh, yeah, yes, yes, B.
We'll follow up with that.
I'm assuming they don't, since it's temporary, but I just want to make sure of that, and then, a couple other little items, and I'll give those to Mr. Ray later, so, I think that's it, for me.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, and if everyone could, um, in your free time between now and our next meeting, um, take a few minutes to read through, and if you do have any questions or notice any corrections need to be made, please send those to Mr. Ray, um, so we can get those questions answered and get any changes made, um, for the October sixteenth meeting.
Correct, and thank you to the Policy Committee, too, for going through these with us, uh, at our last meeting.
It was fun. Um, all right, Mr. Snow.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Connie Kenoke, and legal counsel, negotiations, pending litigation, and legal advice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion by Mr. Snow and a second by Ms. Ryan. Uh, roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Hallman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Nine, aye.
Motion passes. Let me remind the Board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Connie Kenoke, and legal counsel, negotiations, pending litigation, and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the Board went into closed session at eight oh six PM. the record reflect that the Board went into closed session at 8:06 PM.
No, it's not. Okay. Let the record reflect the board came out of closed session at 8:53 PM. Let the record reflect the meeting is adjourned at 8:54 PM.